Based on the governor's state of emergency order. As Chair of the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, if public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities via video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Hangout Meets, meet.google.com for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the phone number 603-387-3865, which is my cellphone, so be patient if I am in a minute to answer that. All by clicking the following website, www.govwentworth.k12.nh.us. Providing public access of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically, in this case, not Zoom, but meeting.google.com. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the school district at www.govwentworth.k12.nh.us. Providing a mechanism for public to alert the public body during meetings if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-387-3865 or email at jwydmer@govwentworth.k12.nh.us. Atturning the meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting have been done by roll call vote. At this point, I'll call the meeting officially to order, and I'll ask each member alphabetically to introduce themselves, the reason that they're connecting electronically, that will be COVID-19, and if there's any, anyone else in the room with you. So I'll start with Krista's back online, so Krista, please state your name and why you're here.
I'm Krista Abeer, I'm here as a member at large.
And you're COVID for COVID.
And I'm all by myself.
Okay. Julianne?
My name's Juliana Cardinal, I'm a member from New Durham, I'm connecting electronically due to the COVID crisis, and I am alone.
Okay. Timothy Eldridge?
Timothy Eldridge, Member at Large, I am joining the meeting virtually due to COVID-19, and currently I'm alone.
Thank you. Wendy?
Wendy Fenderson, Member at Large, at home in New Durham, joining the meeting electronically for COVID-19, and I am alone.
Dr. James Manning? You're muted, Jim. There you go.
Jim Manning, I'm home alone because of the pandemic, that's all I got to say about that.
Okay, thank you, James. James Pittman?
Yes, good evening, I'm Jim Pittman, Board Member from Effingham, I'm home alone here, and I'm here because of the pandemic.
Thank you. Charlene?
Hi there, my name's Charlene Seibel, I'm the Board Member from Wolfboro, I'm home alone, well, my daughter's here, but she just took all my dogs upstairs because they're going crazy, and I'm here because of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Dana?
Yes, Dana Streeta from Oscepe, and we're online due to the COVID-19 epidemic, and I am alone.
Okay, and I'll actually introduce, Jack Widmer, Chair of the Board, I'm here again for COVID-19 because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and I am alone as well. Also, Superintendent?
I'm Superintendent Kathy Cuddy-Ecberg, and I'm here at the SAU office due to the pandemic, I'm also here with Aluka Lamprin, who is our tech person on site to help us make sure everything goes well.
Thank you. Heather Cummings?
Yes, Assistant Superintendent Heather Cummings, participating electronically due to COVID-19 and alone.
Thank you. Kathy Oglenis?
Kathy Oglenis, I'm the Business Administrator, and I am home attending this meeting virtually due to COVID-19, and I am by myself in the room.
Thank you. Linda Murphy?
Yeah, Linda Murphy, School Board Secretary, attending remotely due to COVID, and no one is in the room right at this.
Thank you. Laura Crane?
Hi, I'm Laura Crane, I am a school counselor at Kings Regional High School, I am in a room by myself, remotely due to COVID.
Okay, and I don't see Guy Doddley on my screen, is he, did he step out? Oh, there he is, Guy.
I, I'm the principal at Kingswood High School, and I am attending this meeting tonight because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and I am in the room alone.
Thank you, I think covers everybody from the school district that I have on my list, I don't think there's anyone else. We'll start the meeting, I'll call the meeting to order officially, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance, I know this can be a little awkward, if you want to turn your mic so if you could actually do that, and I'll just repeat it myself, but whatever you'd like to do. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the Republic, where the sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Agenda review, anything to add, Kathy?
I do, I have two things to add, number four, end of school year, we are going to talk about the events, but I also want to make sure that we have the end of, the date of the end of the school year to discuss. And then just an informational item, under that, the Alternative Care Site.
Okay. All right. Under Chair Report, I could just go over the committee assignments that I put together, and then if anybody wants some changes or modifications, we can do that, but I'll, I'll put that under my, my report. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes, and again, this is going to be a roll call vote alphabetically, so we'll go one by one as we go through the process. I entertain a motion to accept the board minutes for the April 9th School Board Meeting. Some move by Tim Eldridge. Second, second by Dr. Jim Manning. Okay, any areas for corrections, changes? Hearing none, all of, where was that noise coming from? Okay. Any, all those in favor then of approving the minutes, first Krista Abeer?
I'll need to exit and re-enter.
Well, I heard you. Okay. All right, we'll put a hold on Krista, she can, Julianne?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yep.
James Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, and we'll, Krista, you back? Still unmuted, you're muted?
I'm back, and I vote to accept them.
Okay, so it's a unanimous vote to accept the board minutes of the April 9th meeting. The second is the approval of the manifests. I have reviewed the manifest that we sent earlier today, and I know there were certain board members that were looking to approve those, but I'll accept the, the manifest total Some moved, because it's been moved by Tim to accept the manifest for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second by Dana.
Dana seconded, okay. Dana, 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 second, okay.
Okay, did I just comment on this deck?
Yes, go ahead.
I got the copies of those from Kathy, but then I responded to her, it looked to me like there's a possibility she did not send the right ones, and she was going to check into that for me, I mean, one of them had all the, there, all the April transactions in it, but the other two were all March transactions, so I didn't know whether those were the correct manifest.
Kathy, can you?
Sorry, I had said I was going to look into it, but I have been keeping track of all of them and putting little, a code up in the right-hand corner of all the manifests once I've scanned them and sent them. Some of those manifesting were scattered amongst the, the office because it was our first time, last time we had a meeting to try and get these manifests to you, so these are all the manifests that didn't make it the last time, plus all the ones now, so that's why I think there was such a large amount this time around with older dates. I certainly will look back at them, but I'm almost confident that they were not emailed or scanned the last time, this was the first time you're seeing them, because they simply weren't in the right place when we did it last time for me to scan them, that's all.
Okay, so I haven't responded to those two yet.
Okay.
And Kathy, could you, could you confirm that physical signatures by the vote of the Board, physical signatures are not necessary on these manifests?
That's correct, per our auditor, that was probably one of the first things I did to reach out to the auditors about our manifests, was to find out what options did we have to have the Board approve manifests that they were not physically going to be coming into the building, and they stated, and I have it in an email from our auditors, that I needed to scan and email the manifest to all the Board members, and simply by them approving by you sending me, I approve these manifests that I print out, and I keep with them the manifest, and that's what will work, that is approved.
Okay, so, okay, so in addition to tonight's roll call vote to approve the manifest, we should email Kathy our approval, and then she can keep that in her records, that the approval has been by each member via email as well.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and seconded to approve the manifest, and again, in the total of $3,361,974.18. All those in favor, again, a roll call vote, starting with Krista?
Aye.
Julianne?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy? You're muted, Wendy. Wendy, there you are.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Yeah?
Yes.
And Chair vote's aye as well, okay. So that takes care of the approval of the two sets of minutes, of the minutes in the manifest for tonight. Next on the agenda is public input, and we're going to, we're going to allow 15 minutes if somebody would like to either call in or, or contact us at this time of the meeting, there's a lot to discuss during the meeting, we're not planning on public input at the end of the meeting, because at the end of this meeting, if there's some concerns or comments, we prefer that you email the superintendent or myself as Chair on any concerns or information that may come that out of the discussions that we have during the meeting, and that way we can respond to your failure quickly without tying up the meeting itself, and again, electronically sometimes it's very difficult to handle that, so if there's any public input, this is the time that the public can contact us, and we'll be happy to take your input and respond if we can. Okay, I'm not, I'm not hearing any public input at this point, so we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report and start with the Teacher Appreciation Week.
Well, Teacher Appreciation Week was a little bit different this year because, of course, everyone is working remotely, but Jack Widmer did send out a nice letter to teacher, teachers and staff, and had a photo on the top that said, "Hard times don't create heroes," it is during the hard times when the hero.
Could you hang on for just a second, somebody is calling in? Hello, this is Jack Widmer.
Hi, this is Jeremy Evans, I'm here at one of the graduates for 2020.
Yeah.
And we did a lot of practice work with how our graduations are going to go, and even in the letter, it kind of must open.
The, we're going to be discussing tonight what the, what the plans are intended to be at this point in time, and once we, once we go through that process, again, we, we certainly invite opinions to be sent to either myself or the Superintendent afterwards, but we're trying to.
Okay, but you just said you weren't going to take any calls afterwards.
Well, not, not calls at the meeting, we'd like you to email or email the Superintendent or myself immediately after this meeting, and then we'll put our heads together and decide how, you know, best response.
Okay. I know there's a lot of concern about this, and they've been on Facebook, and it's still very muddled as to whether our kids are going to be able to be on stage, and I understand that social distancing, at the same time, can have social distancing with less than 10 people, and people can be in cars, and it was on WMUI, and it's with the Department of Education, and we keep going back, and it's more of a mess.
And we certainly understand that, and we're very, very sympathetic certainly to, to what the seniors are facing and what the families are facing, we're trying to do the best we can to come up with a plan that's going to satisfy everybody, and no matter what we decide, we realize that somebody's going to be happy and somebody's not going to be happy, but we're going to do, we're going to do the best we can to try to come up with a solution that works for everybody.
Okay, so we're supposed to stay tuned, and then if there's disagreement, emailing after?
Yeah, that would, that's the best solution, because we can only do so much online, you know, without having people face to face and be able to talk, to really talk it out, it's very, it's very difficult, so if you, if you put your thoughts in an email after the meeting, send it to myself, which is, which is again, it's the jwydmer@gowentworth.k12.nh.us, that'll get to me or, or the Superintendent, and we'll, you know, we'll share that with the rest of the Board as well, and, and, you know, try to resolve any differences or any difference of opinions that might be out there. Okay, we're going to try to do the best we can for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Bye. Okay, unless somebody else calls in, Kathy, we'll, we'll go back, get back to where you were.
Okay, all right. What I was saying, Jack Widmer on behalf of the Board sent a letter out to teachers and staff to show appreciation, we certainly have a deep appreciation for all of our staff members, so I'm just going to read this, "We are certainly living in a most unprecedented time, no one could have imagined where we all are right now, seemingly overnight our lives were all changed, and you were confronted with transforming how you interact in your jobs, your homes, your communities. I am not at all surprised, however, to see how you rose to this challenge, together you acted with swiftness, compassion, and professionalism to create the best sense of normalcy, security, and stability you could for our students, our families, and for one another. On behalf of the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, I want to say thank you. Thank you for caring about the little things, and for all the time you've spent seeing to them. Thank you for caring about the big things, like students being fed and seeing familiar faces each day. Thank you for continuing to focus on how to support them right now and down the road when we are on the other side of all of this. Thank you for all the things we know you were doing that no one can see, for taking on the challenges these recent weeks have given you, even when you were worried or exhausted or trying to figure out how to balance all of this. Thank you for being such a tremendous example of how to rise in times of trouble and uncertainty so that the students we serve know you are still here for them every day. I have never been prouder of this school district than I am right now. Stay safe and stay well. Sincerely, John T. Widmer on behalf of the School Board."
And we. Just, I'll tell you, just to add to that, again, I can't emphasize, emphasize how proud I am of everyone in this district, they've done just phenomenal work from the Superintendent all the way down, and it's just amazing to see, so I couldn't be prouder to be part of the district.
Thank you, Jack. Our next item is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, this, the results came in on this a little bit, well, actually, right before we closed, about a week and a half before we closed, and I just want to go over what's in the Youth Behavior Risk Survey, because I think it's become synonymous with drugs and alcohol, and really, the survey is much broader than that, it's a 90-question survey, and 30 of the questions cover drug, the topics of drugs and alcohol, but the remainder covers such topics as dating violence, health habits, including diet, sleeping, exercise, questions about home life, bullying, and many, many more questions. So I'm going to be asking the Wellness Committee and the administrative team to take a look at the results, and what they're, as they look at the results, I'm asking them to be mindful of our curriculum, and if there's anything that we need to adjust, that maybe we need to emphasize a little bit more, given the results, or anything that we need to add, or for that matter, anything that we need to take away, so that will be, that will be forthcoming. I will also let you know that we did share these results with Team Wolfboro, and I know that they're looking at the drug and alcohol portion of it for what their mission is as a separate organization. So that's what I have for that tonight.
Hey Kathy.
Um, the COVID-19 remote learning update, I've got a fairly extensive update on that, although we were, we were a bit worried that after April vacation, we might see a slump in attendance, but checking in with our school principals, actually, our attendance did not fall off to any significant extent, and in one school, it was actually a little bit stronger, and I know that that's because parents are working with their children to make sure they're online and to make sure they're connecting with their teachers, and I know that's not easy, so I really do appreciate all the parents who are supporting their kids and, and supporting their teachers. The balance as far as workload for students and teachers in managing their virtual classrooms seems to get a bit better each week, of course, this is so brand new that people are, you've heard that expression, "Building the plane while flying it," well, it's like that, it's like building the plane while flying it. And, you know, as well, I think it's going very well, but as well as it's going, it can't take the place of school entirely, so there have been some adjustments that we've need to, needed to make. In the K through 8 grade levels, the teachers have had to prioritize competencies, and Katie Hills has worked with them to do that, the specialists, art, music, PE, tech ed, those kinds of things, you can imagine that that's a whole different world of instruction, and so those teachers have also needed to really pick out those things that are most important in those subject areas. The high school, same thing, they're focusing on essential understandings for each course, because not everything that we would be doing if the students were in school can be accomplished. Katie Hills has worked with the teachers on how to assess work habits, that's, all of the work habits can't be assessed because teachers aren't interacting with students on, in the same way that they would be if the students were in school. Katie has also worked with our K1 and 2 teachers to introduce a platform called CSAW. Again, we have our very youngest students on, working remotely with their teachers, which I think is just terrific and pretty amazing that we've had as much success with it as we've had, and again, I have to mention parents here, because for kindergarten through 2, there's obviously parent support needed to make that work. Katie's also created some online lessons and some math modules and some assessments for teachers, and all of those resources have been put on a website for easy access for teachers. Our math coach has been offering virtual professional development for grades K through 5, and then looking toward the opening of school next year, and what we're going to need to do in terms of figuring out where kids are at, Katie is going to be surveying teachers about what they've been able to accomplish this year, and putting that together with some informal assessments, we'll be making a plan with teachers for where to start off next year. Susan Merrill, our Special Education Director, is planning summer services, at this point, the services are being planned remotely, same thing with our Title I services, and there may be a few of our more complex students that may be able to do something in our school buildings, but it would be no more than a handful, because we, of course, want to be very careful about social distancing and keeping everybody safe. The teachers have been placing a great deal of emphasis on keeping the experience enjoyable for kids and keeping the traditional activities in a virtual format, and they've had, they've worked hard to focus on those essential things that kids need to know. I think the other thing that I want to mention is, they have really focused on the relationship they have with their student, and that has really been the most important thing of all, to keep contact. At the same time, they're very committed to academic integrity as well, and doing as much as they can for the students educationally, so they're finding that balance, and I think just doing a terrific job. Coming toward the end of the school year, there are activities that generally happen, and each administrator is working with the faculty to make sure that the present, that the activities that usually occur at this time of year still do, but of course, they'll need to do that in a virtual format, so they're planning Memorial Day presentations, Field Day type of activities, and I can't wait to see what that will look like, because that will be just so different. There'll be a virtual talent show in most of our schools, and that will be fun, I can't wait to see some of those, I don't get to all of them, maybe this year I can, virtually. Award for all grade levels that are traditional, those will also happen remotely, and just another little side note, we have some clubs that are going on after school, we have a ukulele club, and there's a jump rope contest going on, and I know there are assorted things in our elementary schools that are club-type activities, so it's really great to, that the kids have something really fun to do also. The 6th graders will have a virtual Step Up Day, and again, whatever the tradition has been in the school, the school is going to make every effort to do whatever it has been, but do it virtually, so in New Durham, for example, there's been a tradition of the teachers reading about a student from a scroll, that they plan to still do, but they'll just do it virtually. Let's see. The transition activities are being planned, and there'll be some virtual meetings with 6th graders and 7th grade teachers, so that the 6th graders can get their questions answered about middle school next year. And then each elementary school will be doing it a little differently, but they'll be honoring the school traditions and making it as celebratory as possible. but they'll be honoring the school traditions and making it as celebratory as possible. The sixth graders will also, we hope, have an opportunity for a virtual tour of the middle school. I know James and Carrie are working hard to provide some sort of a tour experience for the kids virtually. So that should be fun. That middle school will also have awards and the students will be asked to submit video messages of their memories so that a presentation can be put together of their memories while in middle school. The administrators are also planning a banner for the eighth graders in celebration of their promotion up to the high school. And there will be some sort of promotion-type activity also for our eighth graders going on to ninth grade. So I think that's, that's it for remote learning. Are there any questions about that?
Kathy, I just have, I, not about that, I just, I just got an email from, from a lady who says, just to let you know, you can only log on to the meeting with district, district email account. This is not public, thanks. So there are different ways that you have to click on to live stream or to get on to the meeting itself?
You know, I, I understand that you can see the live stream by clicking on the live stream, even if you don't have a district email. So I don't know what the problem is. And I have Alyssa, our tech person here, shaking her head yes, that she should be able to, to get it through live stream, so.
Okay, all right. This particular person just sent me an email that said, this stream is not available to your organization, whatever that, whatever that was, so. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention it. She's not saying that, you know, to stop the meeting or whatever, but she just couldn't get on the way she thought she'd be able to on.
All right, let me ask Alyssa if she has any suggestions for that.
Okay.
She's texting her lifeline.
Okay, that's fine. And hopefully this, this person is listening in or whatever. So, you know, they might be able to get, get some input as we go through the rest of the meeting. Okay, thank you.
All right. So, end of year events, I'm going to start with grading because I got a few, well, just a couple of emails on the grading process for quarters three and four at the high school. And there are some differences in grading this year because of the dramatic difference in our instruction. So I'll just give you the highlights of the differences. And then I would ask Laura Crane and possibly Guy to speak because I know they did extensive research in order to make this decision about grading and I just want you to know what's behind the changes. So teachers will not be giving final exams this year, that's number one. Number two is the students may petition for credit status. So some students may have credit or no credit, depending on their average. And then no students will be assigned a GPA or a rank for quarters three and four. There's a lot more to it than that, so I will turn it over to Laura so that she can explain what she did in terms of research and what the discussions at the high school have been.
Good evening. So back in March, when we made the shift to COVID, one of my tasks was to figure out where, how we're going to build this plane that we were flying with, with no wings. And I attended a number of webinars, about 12 webinars, working with schools all over the country and the globe who were ahead of us in the COVID crisis and the shutdown. And they were sharing their knowledge of the things they wish they knew when they went into a remote learning situation. And at the same time, you may recall, colleges were also dealing with the same crisis. And about the end of March, it became very apparent that we had to rethink grading, especially at the high school level, because this was such a quick turn, a quick change for all, all people, for students, for teachers, and that there were heightened equity issues that we know exist from remote learning to start us off. And so in attending these workshops and lectures, there was a, many models out there. And what we heard back from people who wished they had known differently, that they're going to be in it long, they were going to be in it for as long as they were. I think a lot of people thought they were going to be out three or four weeks and we're going to go back to school and we can do anything for three or four weeks. And then it obviously became apparent that's not going to happen. So pass fail became a language that was being used specifically at colleges, grad schools, med schools, and then it trickled down to high schools. And the bottom line is, it came back that folks realized that there was, we needed to be concerned about the wellbeing of our students. We need to recognize there was significant equity issues and that we needed to be realistic about the grading and also not do harm to our students, long-term harm to our students for a situation they had no control over. So the model we came up with was, number one, to keep grades. A lot of schools walked away from grades altogether, which was very defeating for both faculty and students who are working hard to try to keep the rigor going. So we wanted to allow students to be able to keep their grades. We also wanted to respect that students who were having a hard time accessing learning from, making the switch and transitioning for whatever reason, whether it was technology, stress at home, the whole platform doesn't, their strength, that they could have the option of taking a credit only. And using credit versus no credit language is less judgmental than pass fail. And then the no credit option was to acknowledge that some students are truly struggling with this situation and despite interventions are probably not going to have success and that having the language of fail seemed highly unfair to our students. So we opted with providing our students the three options, which is maintain the current grade, choose credit only, or no credit if that's what they chose. The issue for our district is that we are a weighted GPA system and ranking system and to convert that is almost impossible in this situation. So the fair way, if there's a fair in any of this, was to turn off adding quality points to students' GPA and rank for quarter three and quarter four. So that's kind of a summary of it, I guess. Any questions? I don't, Guy, have I left anything out?
Yeah, if I just might, I would just like to add a, add a couple of things. I think one of the most important things that we kept coming back to was the conversation about equity. And how can we treat each student that's in our building with, with equity through this process? And it's hard to be able to do that with home learning, remote learning. So I commend Laura the time to really look. I've heard the governor mention several times on his press conferences that he cannot mandate this, but if he could, he would go to a pass system. We wanted to do as little harm as we could to our students. Students who are working really hard on academics and have success are able to keep a letter grade on their transcripts. Students who may be struggling because they don't have that face-to-face contact or they're not in the classroom with their teachers have the option for credit. And we have realized that some students are struggling through this process. So the decision was made out of empathy and fairness for every student in our building. There's some, you know, when we try, we're responsible for all 850 students that are in our building. I think this is the best possible solution in an unfortunate situation to do no harm to our kids moving forward. This is a worldwide pandemic at Wentworth. It's a situation, we need to make the best decision for, for all our kids that comes with. And I think that's where the decision came from, was how can we treat each student fairly and do no harm to them as they move on?
And I would like to add that, you know, colleges are on board with this NCAA Clearinghouse Athletic Program. Everybody had to make this massive shift. And again, there's much research out there from the Ivy Leagues to community colleges that they are going to hold students harmless for a situation that they had no control over. And so there is backing that this is not a non-issue. And this is pretty common practice in our country right now that we are going pass fail. And so schools are having to make adjustments.
Laura, I just wanted to, to also reinforce that, that it's, it's clear that the colleges are holding harmless these months of remote learning. And I think that's probably a worry that parents have and I certainly don't blame them. I also had the opportunity to contact some of the professors at Plymouth State because I know Plymouth actually went to a pass fail basis. And the folks, I talked to a couple of folks and I said, well, what, what do you wish that you had done? And they said, well, we wish that we were still grading and that we would give kids the option to go to a pass fail, which is just what we're doing. So it's, everything has changed and even the colleges are grading differently.
Any other input on that?
Yeah, Dana here. I, I appreciate all the work and everybody figuring out what's to be done. Again, you can't please everybody. And what I've heard is if there could be one more option, and that would be for seniors only, trying to come up with a numerical grade for third and fourth marking period and continuing with the grade point average and class standing just for the seniors. I know that's not treating everybody equally, but what's being done for the freshmen, sophomore and juniors, we really can't change what you decided to do. But there was that one more request for the senior class that I'd just like to bring the idea forward.
Dana, one thing that might help to clarify is that the seniors still do have a ranking in the class. It's just that quarters three and quarters four were not considered in the ranking. So we still have our Gold Scholars and we still have our class rank. If that, and that's what the, the parent was concerned about or whomever brought forward that idea?
Yeah, there was one parent that had the feeling that their son or daughter was doing much better fourth quarter. Anyways, I think you.
Sure.
That's that email that you sent out.
Right.
Whatever you decide, you know, but I just thought I'd bring that one thing forward.
Yeah, and I would, if we could do something like that, that would be fabulous. Just how our GPA is weighted and calculated is based on classes, not on students. So it's hard to, you can't shut it down by a grade level and you can't shut it down specifically by a class. And so it's not, it's a pretty finicky system. So there isn't that fine tuning that we could do. And that's where we got to closing it out at quarter two. And we also chose quarter two because quarter three, we were not that far into. Some schools were further in, in their quarters and were wrapping up as they were going into crisis mode. We were just in the beginning stages of our quarter. So there wasn't much time that teachers and students had together to justify keeping quarter three in the calculation process.
And I think one thing that Dana mentioned, and I certainly respect parents concerned, but I think one thing you mentioned was that we know it's not equal. And I think that's what I keep coming, actually making decisions. It needs to be equal for every student and it's not. And that's, that's why we try to make this, that there's no harm to our students. And we believe this is the best way that we can do that and treat all students fair, regardless of the opportunities they have at home, you can't have at home right now.
One of the, and if I can go away from that, because I'm kind of doing both two things, listening to what's going on and also looking at some emails as they're coming in. One of the, one of the suggestions, it appears that Wolfboro Community TV is live streaming this on their YouTube channel. So you can get it on to their YouTube channel. So those people that for some reason can't get on via email or something like that, log on to the WCTV YouTube channel to be able to get it on. And that's something that if we have another meeting like this, we should, we should work with the, the folks at WCTV to see if, if they're going to be, you know, carrying it again, that we publish that information as well to, you know, for the public to be able to get on and watch this via YouTube. So, so just another comment, sorry to interfere with this discussion, but.
Kathy, may I ask a question of Laura or Guy, that's slightly different than what we were talking about?
Of course.
I've been, I've been curious about how the eighth to ninth grade transition went with this all happening and how the high school registrations have worked out for you.
Good news, silver lining. Silver lining, we start that process in February and we had finished the process right as we were going to closure. So we were able to bring our current eighth graders over for three, at least three visits, tours, and walk them through the registration process for next year. And so they all had their input without disruption. And I'm incredibly grateful for that as I had many colleagues who had not started that for their whole building and were just trying to figure that out. So our, our eighth graders have been in the building, they have toured, they have seen our electives. They were part of the scheduling process. So it was a pretty smooth process and now we're planning for how to bring them in next year, obviously. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you. I was worried about the timing.
Yeah, I lucked, I lucked out.
Good for you. All right, anything else on the grading at this point? Do you need, do you need any kind of approval or any, I see some of this as an action items, but everything is under an action item, but we don't have to vote on that necessarily.
No, no, we wanted to change something.
Okay.
So next is special events. And this is just a list of the dates. And then we get to the, probably the big item that people are interested in and that's graduation. So just for the special events, on May 12th, cap and gown delivery is planned, which is tomorrow. So those will go out to students across the, seniors across the district. May 28th is awards night, which will be a 6:30 virtual ceremony. June 10th, Senior Athletes Awards Night, 6 o'clock virtual ceremony. June 13th, graduation, and that's to be determined. And then June 29th is Scholarship Night and that's a virtual ceremony. And the reason that that is so late is because it's more difficult to get the various parties together for Scholarship Night because it involves people throughout the community. So that's going to take a little bit more time to gather what's needed for a virtual ceremony. So it's scheduled a bit later.
Kathy, how do people tap in to see the virtual awards or the scholarships?
They, those will be recorded and then placed on YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
That right, Guy? I want to make sure I'm correct. Is Guy still there?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll post the link on the website as it's about to start as well, the school website. And it will go to YouTube as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody could access it through our district website and YouTube.
Thank you, Guy.
The idea is to have everybody watching it together at the same time so that it's a communal experience as much as it can be in this virtual environment. So, so now to graduation, which I think is, is the issue that I think has many parents concerned and, and a bit disappointed because they've been waiting for 12 years to see their children graduate. And I think this is not, not necessarily what they expected would be happening at this time. So given that there are, there have been restrictions on gathering, we started to plan a virtual ceremony. And I'll tell you that we've gotten very split feedback. We've gotten feedback from parents that want a place to hold graduation and we've got feedback from parents that want a virtual graduation. When we, we sent out a survey, or the high school, I should say, sent out a survey with the remote venues that we were able to secure, and that was Castle in the Clouds, Plymouth State University and the NIC. And then the students asked that we include, one more, you probably saw this in the letter that I sent out today. The students asked that we include one more question and that is whether folks wanted, or seniors wanted a face-to-face graduation on August 1st with a remote backup if it couldn't happen. So the, the virtual ceremonies, top choice for venue was Castle in the Clouds. And I'll tell you that the, this, the last question, question number four, about a remote graduation on June 13th versus the face-to-face graduation on August 1st, there was. there was, by a slim majority, the students preferred the June 13th graduation. And I, I understand why they would because first of all, I think there's a lot of concern out there about health. Secondly, if we had a face-to-face graduation on August 1st, we would definitely have to limit participation in order to accomplish social distancing. There are many students who wouldn't be able to come on August 1st because they've gone off to the military or they have summer internships. And there are also family members, grandparents, for example, and other folks that have health concerns that would not be able to attend. So I did send out a letter to parents because I had actually a really great suggestion from one of the parents who had contacted me worried about a face-to-face graduation or a virtual graduation. She was really not aware of what kinds of things we would do if we had a virtual graduation. And so with what I sent out today, and I guess I do have it right here. I described that if we have a virtual graduation, the way it will look is Castle in the Clouds has a huge field. And the idea would be to have people come in procession and park in lines in the field. And there is a 40-foot screen that has been reserved. We would have all of the, the same traditions that we normally have in our graduation ceremony. The program would include certainly the processional, the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, the welcome, the presentation of the gold scholar speakers. Gold scholar speaker number one would, would present a speech. Gold scholar speaker number two, same thing. Then there would be a student to introduce the commencement speaker, which is someone that the students select to give the address. And then, of course, the commencement address, the awarding of diplomas, benediction, and recessional. So all of that would occur. We would try to stick as closely to the traditions that we've had for many, many years, but do them virtually. And that includes the processional with pomp and circumstance. It includes some musical selections. And then there's another piece also that Guy and I talked about today. And that, which I think is a great idea, and I appreciate Guy bringing it forward. If, it may be possible for us to set up a stage earlier in the day and have a photographer there so students can come with a couple of family members, whoever they choose, and have their pictures taken and at that time pick up their diploma. But it would be very scheduled and it would be a one-on-one situation so that no one would be at risk health-wise to give them, again, another experience that they've had in the past. We're, we're trying to do the best job that we can do with the virtual ceremony if that's what the board decides is the best way to go. So, and go ahead, Guy.
I'm just, if I could just add that if we set the stage up, it would be on that day, so their pictures would be taken at the Kingswood campus. And I think that's important too, that we're on to the fair ground, something that the kids will remember. And that's been part of their lives the last four years, so.
The other thing that, that is being done, it's been tradition for kids to decorate their mortar boards. And of course, they won't be processing in in the same way. So we'll be distributing tiles the size of mortar boards for seniors to decorate, which will be filed and placed on, in the high school commemorating the Kingswood class of 2020, which I think is just a wonderful idea. And I have to thank Heather Cummings for that idea. I just loved it when she suggested it. So that will be happening as well. So, you know, there's, there's no denying that this, if we go with a virtual graduation, there's no denying that it's going to be disappointing because it's certainly not the graduation that seniors and their families expected. On the other hand, I don't know how we keep the social distancing protocols with such a large group and keep everybody safe if we try to do a face-to-face graduation. I, I know that everyone involved in this will do their absolute best to make this a great experience for the kids. I know they'll want to add some things, they're probably want to do signs and decorations and, and put a lot of decorations on their cars. So I think there's a way to make this fun and a memorable experience for them, even though it's not the graduation that they thought would be happening. So that's, that is my recommendation. And I realize people may have, you know, the board may have different thoughts about it than I do. So I know you're going to want to talk about it, especially given the families have different ideas about it as well.
Could you open up the floor to anybody that'd like to have some input on, on the process?
Yeah, thank you. I just, I would say that after I read the letter, first of all, I thought it was an excellent letter. And I think that it makes a whole lot of sense. And, you know, ultimately, it is our responsibility to make sure that we try to keep our students and our, you know, everyone who works in the, in the district safe. And I thought that it was a really good plan and it would still celebrate, you know, our seniors. And, and it showed a lot of thought and a lot of planning and I, I'm behind it. I mean, I support it, I'm not behind doing it. You know what I mean?
Thank you very much. I think it's a great idea, but I don't know why I thought of it, but what if it's a really hot day, like 90 degrees out and people are in their cars? I mean, it seems like a practical detail, but am I missing something?
It's going to be late. The, the theater piece of the ceremony would take place when the sun sets about 8:15. So it would be a cooler part of the day. The, the video wouldn't show if we had it during the day. So we would do the awarding of diplomas in the traditional time period. And then in the evening, they would be able to go to the ceremony. It would be dark and cool a part of the day.
Oh, great. I knew I was missing something obvious.
Well, that's because I didn't mention that part, Jim.
Manning, you anything?
Well, you know, the thing is, there's two issues to be concerned with here, at least. One is back in 1918, they didn't have what the technology we've got. Considering our technology is well ahead of that, this is a better alternative than what they had back then, obviously. Secondly, most of the people who will be there observing are going to be over the age of 60. It just happens, there are going to be a lot of people that are that age. They're the riskiest group of all of them. I know I'm part of it, so what the hell, I'll let it go at that point. But if we don't take care of the, the people who are watching, it would be a responsibility none of us will want. One suggestion I might make, Guy, would it be technologically possible to do like a drive-in movie theater? Where they use, they use the cars?
That's what we'll be doing is there would be a drive-in theater and the stuff would come through their radios in their vehicles.
Perfect, that's what I was sort of wondering. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's making lemonade out of lemons, is there a question about it?
It's not ideal and there's a lot of emotion and I understand that. But these kids deserve to be separated and I think this is the best possible way that we can and recognize the restrictions that we need to follow to keep people safe. And I think it's extremely important that we do that. And I think this could be really special for families and for kids once we get over the emotion of it not being the same.
Well, I agree too. I think it's a tremendous, tremendously well-thought-out plan. Again, as, as chair, I always enjoy, you know, seeing face-to-face with the kids and being able to hand diplomas out and all that, which is, which is really a special thing for them and for me as well as a chair. But these are unusual circumstances and I think, you know, this is a well-thought-out plan. Hopefully, everything will go smoothly and I, I just think it's, it's the right thing to do in, in the, in these times. Dana?
I appreciate all the work everybody's done to make this happen. And I think the parents will all be happy when they hear the complete plan and understand what we have heard tonight. It's exceptional what the planning has been. Thank you very much for the complete effort by everybody in getting this done. Thank you.
Yeah, just, I just got an email with a question. Will cars be spaced so that a small car will not get stuck with no view, view behind a large car and a van?
Sit on the hood.
Once there's a plan and an approval, those are the things that we've already just, not obviously we already have a plan for, but it'll be part of the process. I'm looking, you, give, give me the venue and we will make it work. And it will be, it'll be the best and the.
Okay.
Jack?
Thank you, Guy, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Jack?
Wendy, yeah.
I just wanted to say that I really, you know, again, just the situation at hand is, is, you know, sad as, you know, I watched my daughter graduate the traditional way last year. But I want to say that I think it's really amazing that Guy had that idea because just standing on the alumni field and being to have that picture, I know that that's very important to be on the Kingswoods grounds if possible. And I think that's a great opportunity, not ideal, but I think that was a really good idea, Guy. Thank you for that.
Well, I, I don't want to take all the credit. We've got a lot of people working behind the scenes with the class advisors and input from a lot of families. You know, and as, as we learn about the restrictions, I think, you know, setting up a, a stage somewhere on our campus allows us to be able to do some things as traditional as possible, but also follow the safety and health guidelines for the people involved. So Kathy's been amazing supporting me through this as well as my class advisors, student council has input. So it's, it's been a team effort. You know, and I've had some great input from, from families. So I think we're going to, we're going to make this work the best way we can.
One other question that just came through as well. And they wanted to know if it would be possible to have some drone footage for the event.
Some, I'm sorry, somewhat?
Draw you, drone footage for the event.
Drone footage, sure. I don't see why not, that's a great idea.
Okay.
Oh, drone footage, I'm sorry.
Yeah, drone, drone footage, yes.
I think that would be really cool. And I know Scott Geesler has access to be able to use some of those things. You know, if Scott's listening, sorry Scott, to volunteer you for that, but you know, we have that technology at school and it's something that would be pretty neat to see.
Yeah, I think that would be a great suggestion. So I, I think that's great.
And Scott would be exactly the one who'd be able to pull that off.
Yes.
Excellent. All right, well, then we could put that into the plan then as, as it starts getting finalized and that sounds great.
So Jack, we do need a vote on that.
Okay, so at this point, we look, look for a vote for graduation to be on June 13th, correct? As a, as a virtual, virtual graduation at Castle in the Clouds. The details to be specified as soon as they're all finalized.
Some move.
Second, it's been moved by Charlene. Get my paper here.
Can I ask one question before the final vote? In the event that it's bad weather, which one wouldn't think that it'd be too bad sitting in a car, not sitting on a field. But if you are in a car and having to one, run your windshield wipers and what have you, has there been any thought as far as maybe pushing it out a day or something like that?
There, there has been discussing, discussion on that. We had reserved one for the following day as a rain date. The only issue is right now is, is that screens of that size are in such high demand around the state right now because the company we booked about two weeks ago, we talked to the lady yesterday. And it was, she was working on 100 quotes for that one company for screen. So we're praying for a good day on June 13th. But yes, we are aware that the castle's not going to want us driving on their fields in bad weather as well. It's really, really wet. So we would be able to have a rain date and move it to hopefully that would be that Sunday.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other comments on, on this at this point? Jim, Manning?
I was the second, just in case.
Okay, yeah, I got you down as the second on that.
All right.
Any other discussion on the graduation for June 13th, virtual graduation with details to follow? Okay, hearing no other comments, all those in favor, sliding with Krista?
Yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Kim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, thank you. Great, great, great work, Guy and Kathy, a terrific effort. And let's hope everything goes as planned.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I just like to publicly thank my staff that have been working so hard on this as well, driving around the area, looking at venues to, well, thank our class advisors too, their hard work.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
All right. The next agenda item is end of school, the date of the end of school. I've gotten some, some feedback about this as well. Initially, I thought that I was going to have to ask for a waiver from the Department of Education because we had, not only did we have our blizzard bag days, but we had three additional snow days. And then we had two emergency days. And our elementary schools had fewer hours than, or three of our elementary schools had fewer hours than our middle and high school. And so it put those schools short. However, when, again, right before vacation, the guidelines came through from the Department of Education as to what you consider when applying for a waiver. And in those guidelines, we can count up to 30 minutes of recess as instructional time. So when you count the 30 minutes of recess as instructional time, then we have more days than we need. So I'm going to recommend that we, we don't have to get a waiver. And we, like I said, we have more days than we need to meet the hourly requirements. So I would like to suggest that we end school on June 12th for K through grade 11 and on June 5th for our seniors. I've heard from a number of parents that are providing a lot of support to their kids and they are really tired and the kids are tired too. So I think there's a worry on the parents' part, and I have to say on the teachers' part as well, as to whether or not the kids can really sustain all the way till June 19th. We, June 19th is one of the latest dates of anyone closing. And that's, of course, because of the way we do our calendar and the fact that we generally start after Labor Day for, for some good reasons. But it does put us significantly later than some other schools. So I think to provide families with some relief and, and teachers as well, that it makes sense for a June 12th graduation. And as we usually do, to have the seniors end one week earlier than the rest of the, the kids in the district.
Any, any comments on that? Because we, we should vote on that as well to, to affirm those dates.
As far as the plenty of time, is the 12th the actual cutoff for the number of days?
There are more days available. We have about five more days available in addition to that. The only reason I'm not recommending that we stop earlier than that is that it's a really long summer for kids that, you know, haven't gotten a full complement education. And it keeps us on par with a couple of our sending schools.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments or concern?
The sending districts are okay with this. The sending districts are okay with this.
Um, well, some of the sending, everybody in the state is all over the map on this, Dana. We've got some schools that are ending in mid-May. I think there's one even ending at the beginning of May. And then we've got others that are at the beginning of June. We've got, uh, one of our sending schools is stopping very early and then another one is stopping right around the time we are. So two of them, I think, are stopping right around the time we are. Um, so everyone's all over the map. It's unfortunate because when parents see everybody all over the map, it makes, you know, makes them wonder, well, why didn't we do it this way or why didn't we do it that way? Every school district, of course, is different and they have their reasons for doing it the way they're doing it. And they've had, you know, maybe not as many snow days as we've had, and maybe they started school before Labor Day. So you can't really compare, um, but it just, it just makes it difficult.
Okay.
Jack?
Dr. Jim?
Yeah. One thing I'm concerned about Kathy is what about food service for the kids that can't? Well, how are you gonna handle that through the end of the year?
Food service is going to continue to go through the summer. Um, we've applied for the summer feeding program so that we can continue and we'll continue with, with the two sites to serve food all summer long. Because I, I worry about that too, Jim.
Yeah. And, uh, how are you gonna handle the per hour people? In terms of powers and so forth? Terms of their time mode?
Uh, well, they're working right now, so they're working, supporting kids virtually. And what we'll do is we'll offer some professional development because I think that, uh, there's been a big learning curve with remote learning this year. And I'm concerned that we may find ourselves back here at some point next year. So I think the motivation for, um, for some additional learning is going to be pretty high.
So in other words, we're gonna give the parent something to do for their contract through that point?
Yes. Yep.
Good. That's, that's all I got. It sounds good to me.
The only other question that I've got, I mean, um, I know you had said Kathy that, um, the student participation has been good since April vacation. I was actually concerned with April vacation, figuring kids would start to drop off at that point. Um, but we really haven't had good weather yet. Um, and I'm thinking that as the good weather starts to come, um, we're gonna see those students start to fall off. Um, as, as much as I would hate to see that happen, I think it's gonna happen. Um, so going that extra, um, distance, um, with the, with the date, I, I think if we could shorten it up a little bit more, um, just to, to help those parents. I know I'm fortunate, my daughter, she does her schooling every day without, without issue. Um, but the parents that have to sit down with their kids, um, each day, um, I, I would assume that's quite a struggle for them. Um, and I understand, you know, the long summer, um, but it's not that we haven't done that before. Um, like with the construction, um, we ended early then. Um, and if we've got the opportunity to end early, um, I think we should look, um, at possibly doing that.
Okay. If I, if I can jump into, uh, like I did get a request from, uh, an email as well. Um, and, and basically it says if there are more days available, uh, give it to them or survey the families. So, uh, you know, again, maybe if we can't make the, if we need to table this decision tonight, um, we may want to have a, a special meeting if we are gonna survey or we can, or we change the date tonight. Um, to, to shorten, shorten the school year. Well, one, one of the two, uh, if, uh, if we really think it's important to go through the 12th, um, that's fine. Um, the suggestion, uh, I, I understand Tim's concerns. And I think if, uh, a particular person would like to, uh, uh, maybe, uh, you know, have a, a survey done, if that makes any sense. It really, it depends on, uh, you know, where things, where things are. I, I can go with either way at the point. Um, I, I do sympathize with, uh, some of the parents out there struggling through this and, uh, the kids are doing a great job, uh, going through their process at this point, but, uh, Tim has a good point too. If the weather starts turning and these kids get a little antsy, we know what it's like when they're in school anyway. Um, and this is, this is an extreme situation, so.
Jack, flexible on this point, so.
I'm sorry, Kathy.
I'm flexible on this point. I, you know, I, I understand both sides of this.
Okay. Well, Wendy?
I'm sorry. I, I'm raising my hand like I'm on call.
No, no, that's okay. It's, yeah, for me to see it that way.
Um, you know, and I, I, you know, I sympathize, uh, you know, with, with the parents and I, you know, I think we all do first and foremost. Um, and I would just tend to agree with Tim a little bit. I just worry about people's, just the mental health, like Tim said, weather is gonna start getting better and hopefully, you know, there are, you know, the restrictions are, are morphing every day, what we can do. And I just, I just feel so, I, you know, I just know the parents are working so hard and the teachers are working so hard. I just worry that if we push them, not that we're in a bad way, but I just, I just worry and I would like to have just maybe a special meeting or some, or consideration like, because I do think we have, you know, the five days, if we have other days that we can utilize. I just worry about this, just the, the mental health of people during this.
I would just like to add a comment that I think we should keep our options open. Uh, looking ahead, let's say the epidemic spreads north and we need people to stay home. Well, that will give them something to do, also online learning. But, uh, I, I agree. Superintendent could, we could table this and you make the decision at a later date. Yeah, that'd be great.
It's, uh, it's kind, it's kind of interesting. Uh, there, there are a couple of emails that I'm gonna have to get back to after the meeting, obviously. But, um, you know, certainly some of the emails coming in that I'm seeing now, um, are, uh, definitely, if we have five days, use the five days, uh, shorten the, shorten it up a little bit. Um, again, that's, that's the opinion of a few parents that are emailing in now. I think we certainly have to take into consideration, um, about this. And if we don't want to make the decision tonight, um, you know, we don't have to, but we'd have to call a special meeting, uh, you know, within a week or two, uh, to make the decision. So we, we have some time. Uh, we can't, we can't do this in, in a vacuum. So, um, we, we really have to, have to come to, come to grips with this. I'm, I'm flexible either way, um, at this point. I, I do understand all the concerns about, uh, you know, the, how tough it is on the parents and the kids and, and all of that. And if it makes sense to, uh, uh, to shorten it up, that's, that's perfectly fine with me as well. So, uh, whatever, whatever anybody thinks, if you want to postpone tonight, we can. Uh, if you want to take a vote tonight, we can do that as well.
I, I think it might help parents and teachers, especially if there's more of, um, more of a feeling that we should shorten the school year a little bit more. I think the sooner folks know that, I think the better.
Yeah.
So, and I'm very flexible about it too. I definitely see, you know, the exhaustion in parents and teachers.
If we, uh, oh, go ahead, Charlene.
I, I just wanted to say that for a while I lost all of you and I had to, the screen froze and I had to leave and come back. So I've missed some of the conversation. I think the last people I, I, the last person I heard from was Wendy. So, um, where are we now? Are we talking about postponing the vote or what?
Well, no, basically, uh, we're, right, we're, right now, we're in that, in that mode of either postponing the vote or taking a vote tonight to possibly shorten the, you know, shorten the school year, uh, and ending on the 5th as opposed to the 12th. Uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm getting some emails with that same sentiment that, um, I, I've gotten three or four of them, you know, fairly quickly that, uh, the parents are certainly looking to, uh, get whatever relief uh, we can possibly get without adversely affecting the students, obviously, but, and their education, uh, just because of the situation, the way it is. So, uh, it seems like sentiment on the few emails that I've gotten through, um, are, are definitely, uh, to, to vote to shorten it. And, uh, if we have a motion to shorten the school year, that's fine. And seconded, we can discuss that. Uh, if there's a motion to table and wait for a special meeting, we can do that. Um, I think sooner, sooner we do it, the better, the probably the better decision we, we, we're making and we'll forward from there.
What, and, and the, the ramification, I'm sorry, um, let me just finish the question. The ramifications are such that we're not gonna get in trouble with the state because we are already in excess. So we could, we could shorten it by what would be a date, maybe, uh, the last Friday of May, uh, is that the?
No, oh, it would be, it would be June 5th instead of June 12th.
Oh, okay, okay. Cause I was thinking, I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that Tim and Wendy were talking about shortening it even more.
Well, short, shorten it, we shortened it from the 19th to the 12th, uh, you know, with no issue. Uh, and then, uh, and, and that was still leaving five days of flexibility, um, and it would bring us back to the 5th. So 5th for K, K 11. Um, and well, for, for everyone, would, would that change, Kathy, if we did that, would that change the seniors? Uh, from the 5th to the last Friday of May?
It could. Well, let me think about that.
I would think it would have some effect on Castle in the Clouds. It wouldn't be something we could call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is that, again, are we, then are we shifting the, shifting the graduation by another week as well? So.
Well, I think, I think maybe then everybody would just end on the 5th.
Okay. So everyone to end on the 5th, the graduation would probably be, if it's gonna be a castle in a cloud, we'd probably still have to be on the 13th.
Right. And that's usually the way we do it. They usually, um, don't have school that week prior to graduation. So that would work out okay.
I think, I think that would make some sense. So it's really up to the board if, if, if that's the direction that we'd like to go. Um, that seems, seems to be, I know the sentiments from, from some of the, uh, emails that, uh, that I've been getting. Um, so I think we should make a decision one way or the other.
Okay. So what we're talking about doing is having everybody have the last day of school, June the 5th, and then graduation on the 13th for the seniors.
Correct.
Okay, got it. I'm good with that.
Yes, Mr. Pittman?
Would I be able to put forth a motion to make the last day of school the 5th of June?
You certainly can. So Mr. Pittman makes a motion to last day of school on the 5th?
I would second that.
Okay. So we have moved and seconded by Tim Eldridge. Okay. So we've had any other discussion on this then? Uh, so we're, we're gonna move the last day of school, uh, to the 5th for all students and graduation as we voted will still be on the 13th. No other discussion?
And just to be clear, we, we wouldn't give the seniors any extra days, um, as far off, right?
No, they, they, they're already off a week before graduation anyway. So they, it's just, in this case, everyone will be off on this. The, the last day of school will be the same for everybody.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Let's take a vote on that then, Krista.
Uh, yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Wendy?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair vote, yes, as well. Okay. So Kathy, the official end of school then will be June.
I think we'll have happy students and some happy parents and teachers. So that's good. Thank you. And let's see, uh, the last item under, enter the year events. Uh, I just wanted to let folks know that our Kingswood Arts Center is an alternative care site. In other words, uh, if it's needed, we are an extension of the hospital in, in the event that, that the Emergency Operations Committee in Wolfboro has been just amazing. It's a really diverse group who have been taking all aspects of planning to, for protection of the community, um, in, in many different kinds of ways. And, uh, I, I've been working with that committee, which has been really great. But our role primarily has been just to have Kingswood Arts Center as an alternative care site. And they are going to, or they have requested to keep their equipment in there throughout the summer, which is fine with me. I think, you know, there, everyone is wondering if once things open up a little bit more, if there'll be another surge. And so they do want to keep everything set up. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that that was happening and that, uh, we are formally recognized as an alternative care site.
Yes, excellent. To Kathy.
And let's see, I, oh, proposed board meeting schedule in your packet. You should see the proposed board meeting schedule for next year. So it has us going to different schools like always. Nothing, you know, nothing really unusual about it. Very similar to prior board meeting schedules.
I, I mean, personally, I looked through it. I think it looks fine just the way it is. Um, if we, if we approve this and as the year progresses, we need to move something back and forth. We've done that before for various reasons. Um, I don't think there's any reason we can't get this published and, and on the record, up to the rest of the board.
I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with the proposed schedule for the board.
Second.
Second?
Second by Krista.
Dana.
Yeah.
Dana?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all right. Any other discussion on that? I mean, I think we, we move around like we normally do. Okay. Uh, all those in favor, then. Krista?
Yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Yes.
Julianne's gonna say yes? Okay. Look, she did. I didn't hear her.
I did.
Thank you. Uh, Tim is yes. Uh, Wendy?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair vote, yes, as well. Okay. Okay. That's, uh, as far as School Board Association, you know, again, uh, I did get a couple of emails about, uh, new, uh, new board member, uh, webinar that they've been having. Uh, Jim Pittman went to the, one of those, uh, which is, which is great. I'm glad he did that. Um, you know, they're doing the best they can as well under very difficult circumstances. Uh, and also a quick, uh, NHIAA update. Um, I had a finance meeting. I'm in their finance committee and I, we had a finance meeting last week. Um, and we're fortunate enough to be able to, to apply for the, uh, payroll protection plan, uh, which gave them, uh, some money, uh, which in this case is going to be able to be used to pay back the tools for the spring sports that had to be canceled. Um, as well as the, uh, referees of, uh, and officials, uh, fees that were paid upfront, uh, to start the season. Uh, they're gonna get a refund on, uh, the money that they paid as well. So, uh, NHIA has struggled, obviously, but that money that came in, it helped you to offset that to make, uh, the officials haul, uh, and to, uh, reimburse the schools and offer the spring sports, uh, programs that they were paying for. So, uh, it was a tough decision on everybody's part to cancel the spring sports, but, uh, it was a necessary, uh, process that went through. And I do have an NHIA all-day meeting Thursday via, uh, Zoom as well. So, uh, that could be a, a fun day. Okay.
Long meetings, Jack. All day on the Zoom. Wow.
Yeah, it's a little crazy. And on the, uh, on the chairman's report, uh, I just had two, uh, two items. Uh, we, we sent a, an expression of sympathy to, uh, Nathan, Nathan Whitworth on the passing of his father-in-law and Mary Knutson on the passing of her mother-in-law. Uh, and the only other thing that I'd like to review real quickly, um, from the committee assignments. And if you want to cut down where your, where your assignments are, then get back to me if you want to change something. Um, my goal is to keep each committee to four members, even though our committee structure is, is set up where all board members can be members of the committee, uh, and no votes coming out of a committee are final until they come before the final board. I prefer to keep the committees to four to avoid any confusion about maybe a quorum or maybe not a quorum. Doesn't mean that somebody. Doesn't mean that somebody, another, another board member can't attend a meeting. But if a vote is taken at that meeting, uh, to recommend something to the full board, that, that visiting member as such, uh, really shouldn't vote on that recommendation. They should vote on that recommendation at the full board meeting. So again, it doesn't restrict the members to go to the meetings if they want to go. But I, it just keeps it a lot cleaner. Um, if we have four members maximum, or each committee, uh, I think that makes a lot more sense. So I've got it structured right now. Academic Affairs, uh, would be Krista Aver, Tim Eldridge, Wendy Fenderson and Charlene Platt on Academic Affairs. Building and Maintenance, uh, Julianne Cardinal, Tim Eldridge, Dr. Jim and Jim Pittman. Human Resources, uh, Krista Aver, Wendy Fenderson, Dana Streeter and myself. And if somebody would like to step in, I can always step off, you know, as Chair, I don't have to be on a committee necessarily, but I can always step off. But if, if, if that makes sense. Uh, and on the Finance, Dr. Jim, Jim Pittman, Dana Streeter and myself. And Charlene, I'd ask if you would be willing to serve as the Wolfboro Community TV rep. I know you've done it in the past. Wendy, Wendy's done it and I, and, and I know she'd prefer not to do it again. And I'd like to, like to ask you to do that if you would. Okay. I see, yes, that's good. Thank you. So if, if anybody on the committees.
Oh, sorry. My mic's on.
I, I, I saw, I saw your head going, yes, so.
Yeah, my head was on, yes. I said, okay, sure, fine.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, if there's any assignments that you're really not comfortable with, like, like you'd like to move to a different committee, we can certainly take a look at that. But again, the, the fact that your name is not a, an official committee member, doesn't mean that you can't attend any of those committee meetings, listen in, and then as a full board vote on any of the recommendations that come out of those meetings. Okay?
So I have a quick question. Am I technically only assigned to Academic Affairs?
Academic Affairs right at this point, because we thought the Community TV would be enough, uh, another committee as such.
Yes, sure. Okay. No worries. No worries. All good.
Jack?
Yes.
Is Dana Streeter off or on building and grounds?
Dana Streeter, right now you're off that. That doesn't mean that you can't go on to that, you can't attend those meetings. I wanted to put Jim Pittman on there. Um, you know, with Jim's background, I wanted to put him on that as well. But we can, we can talk about that.
That's okay. Now, the only thing you, I, I realize I can't vote, but can I ask, can I have input?
Sure. You, you'd be like a, a, a community member sitting there with input. Absolutely. Uh, you can have whatever input you'd like. Just that I, I want to make sure that qualifications come out, voted on by the full board as it's, as it's indicated on our, on our slip.
No, I'm fine.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns? Certainly let me know. And I have nothing else for Care Report. So we can move on to Committee Reports. Uh, anything from, uh, Academic Affairs? Wendy, I think you were on that right now, but.
Yep. Not at this time, Jack. No.
Okay. Julianne, any updates on, uh, Building and Maintenance?
Yes, we, we met earlier tonight. Um, just a couple of updates on the solar power for Effingham. Barrington Power has submitted the paperwork for the interconnection to Aversource. Um, we've been told that their rebate documents have been submitted as well. We started a, a draft or a first go at a, a five-year look ahead and a 10-year look ahead with the maintenance department. So we're pretty excited to get that ball rolling and, and really develop a plan to, uh, take care of our facilities. That's about it.
Okay. Um, I have nothing on Finance right at this point and, uh, or Human Re, Human Resources. So advanced planning, you can see down below, um, there, there's really not a whole lot other than our, our next school board meeting with, with the 16th. And that, that will give us an opportunity to see how the end of school actually went on the 5th, now that we voted on the last day being the 5th. And I'm, I'm certainly assuming that meeting will be similar to this one, uh, a remote, uh, meeting, uh, as we have. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Any, any closing comments by board members? I would, I would.
You know, we always have those little silver linings and things. Um, since we've gone to this venue of being online, I can hear what everybody says.
That's great. All right. Uh, Dana, did you have something? Dana, did you want to say anything? Nope.
I just wanted to say as far as the advanced planning, um, all those dates that you had given us, Kathy, as far as, uh, the virtual stuff coming up, can you make sure we get that information? I know, uh, Linda's usually pretty good on the end of the year activities. But if we could get that spreadsheet like we normally do, um, listing that out and how we can log in and what have you, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Excellent. Um, I, I, as, as Chair, I would just like to say, you know, thank you for everybody's input tonight. I think the discussion was really great. Not easy decisions to make, uh, but I think, you know, we talked them through. I think we made a very good choice and some very good decisions. Uh, and I really appreciate everybody's input and, and efforts in, in moving, moving forward here. So thank you for that. Any other comments by any board members? Okay. I would entertain a motion then to go under our, uh, under, to go into non-public under RSA 91A, semicolon, 3, paragraph 2, the person don't matter.
So move.
Second.
Who moved that?
I did.
Okay. Dr. Jim moved. Who seconded? Charlene? Charlene seconded. Okay. Okay. Uh, roll call vote, uh, all in favor. Krista?
Yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Pittman?
Yes.
Arlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. So we are now in non-public session. Uh, again, for the public that's out there, thank you very much for, uh, listening in. And again, email us with any of your, uh, information, concerns. Uh, I'll try to email everybody back as quickly as I can. Uh, and if I don't have the answers tonight, uh, we'll work on those answers over the next couple of days. Again, thank you very much for participating.